Automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of our legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A: Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 7, 2023, and call for a meeting set Tuesday, March 21, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have three resolutions, D, E, and F. We do not have need for an executive session, so is there a motion to approve resolutions and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Chris. Oh, sorry. Motion passes six to zero.
We are going to move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and come back to the Board of Corrections, so the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A: Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 7, 2023, and item B: Approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, March 14, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Any questions or comments? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Consent agenda, items A through F. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, and just for the record, there will be, there has been some items that have been submitted to or for the application for our Visitors Improvement Fund. We will take those up as we move along this year, but we want to get that application out because we're running on our time schedule here, so just so the folks know from the visitors promotion, we'll move forward, but some changes have been brought forward. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. That item, I believe it's item C on the consent agenda. Did you want to say something on this? Go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm deferring to my colleague here. I'll say something after she does.
I think just for the public to know, we have a committee that does allocate this funding from the Visitor Improvement Fund, and it really is a thoughtful process. We have the application in our agenda just because we've never really formally approved their application process in the past, and I think it's just important to understand what they're doing and that it is a process. It's not something that's taken lightly. There's state statute that kind of dictates the rules that should be followed, and I feel like they do a diligent job doing so. Having said that, since we've never formally approved their application in the past, there are just some little tweaks that can be done here and there, and so since the application needs to get out next week to folks who are requesting funding, I agree with approving the item today, and then over the next 12 months, we have a chance to make any modifications as we all deem necessary as we meet with the committee. So I do really appreciate the work that Emiliano Lerdah and Todd Simon and the rest of the committee do for this. It's time-consuming. It has to be an act of love because there's really not a lot of thanks that you probably get for that, so I just do want to say that I appreciate everything you do to get funding out to the community, so I appreciate it.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Commissioner Boyle. The Visitor Improvement Fund and their board, who are all volunteers, do a great job, and I'd like to commend Emiliano Lerdah and Todd Simon, who are here today on behalf of the board, for the excellent job that they do in administering this important program. I get nothing but positive feedback from the community about how these resources are invested in our neighborhoods across the county. And to give an example, this Sunday at the Benson Theater, which is a visitor improvement project, we will be hosting an event celebrating Irish culture and heritage. This board passed a resolution naming March as Irish Heritage Month at the end of February, and this has drawn a lot of attention, including a grant from the Republic of Ireland. So as an example of the great things that the Visitors Improvement Fund does, here are people from another country attracted to a visitor improvement-funded project and investing in our community. These are dollars that we would never have seen but for this development, and the development goes forward in large part because of the support and vision of the people at the Visitors Improvement Fund, so kudos on that, and we would invite everybody to come out to the Benson Theater on Sunday, March 19, to see a great celebration of Irish culture and heritage. And people from all over the community and hopefully all over the world will be there to share some of the joy, and wouldn't have happened without the help of the folks of the Visitors Improvement Fund, so thank you very much for all you do. Appreciate it.
No other lights. That is the consent agenda, item A through F. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
At this time, we do have some visitors that I would like to recognize, and I'll have Val, who is a regular now here at our county board, bringing these wonderful young people and folks from other countries to visit us, and once Val's done talking about his work, we will have each of you come to the podium and just give your name and where you're from and what your line of interest is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Once again, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to bring this delegation of international visitors to the Douglas County Board meeting. I would like to thank Mary Ann Borgensen for the wonderful introduction that she gave this morning to the visitors in regards to the work that you all are doing on behalf of the citizens of Douglas County. Since 2015, University of Nebraska at Omaha has had a grant from the U.S. Department of State to bring the best and the brightest from Southeast Asia, the future leaders of what are known as the ASEAN Countries, the Association of Southeast Asian Nations, to the United States for normally a five-week program in civic engagement and leadership. Because of the work that UNO has done for the State Department in regards to this program, what started off as one delegation per year has turned into two delegations per year. Then that turned into UNO not only having their programs here, but also overseeing the YSLI Program, Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative programs, in Arizona State University and in Portland State University. Beyond that, a similar program has now been added called BOLD, which is now bringing groups with similar qualifications from Eastern Europe, specifically Bosnia-Herzegovina, Montenegro, and Serbia. And so this program, which started in 2015, has greatly expanded, and I think the community should be very pleased with the work that UNO has done internationally in regards to it. In regards to this specific group, yes, they are all from Southeast Asia. They are all from the ASEAN countries, and they are here on a civic engagement and leadership program. And as I said earlier, this is truly the best and the brightest. I'm just about done, and I'll turn it over to them. I just wanted to say one thing about how this group is selected. The selection process is similar to the International Visitor Leadership Program, which is the oldest State Department program in regards to citizen diplomacy. It was started just before World War II. And the process is that the best and the brightest are selected by our embassies in their countries, further vetted by the U.S. Department of State, and they end up here. Since the beginning of the IVLP program, over 1,000 of the alumni have gone on to be either president or prime minister of their country, not to mention all of the other people who have exceeded in many, many other areas. So earlier this morning, I had a conversation with one of you in regards to that there might be a future prime minister among us today, and I would like to say that there is a really good possibility of that, or perhaps a president, since that is one of the things that is also available in their country. So with no further ado, I would like to once again thank the board for your gracious welcome for one of my delegations, and you've been putting up with me now for 21 years, and that in itself deserves a big thank you. So would you please begin to form a line down this aisle, and then one at a time come up and introduce yourselves?
And as Mary Ann said, you can brag on yourselves a little. Yes, absolutely.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my name is Menika Pong Sa from Laos PDR. So I am currently working at the Word Hill Organization as the data collection consultants. So my work mostly traveling to work in the rural area in Laos PDR. So I see a lot of people's livelihood, and my passion is about the community development. So previously, I co-founded a youth organization called the Community Club, re-providing volunteering opportunities and focusing on youth empowerment. And also, like, my passion is, I'm very passionate about youth empowerment and rural development. Thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you and welcome.
Hi, good morning. I'm Kamila Barvin from Singapore, and I'm also working in community development in EB Impact, which is an organization that focuses on youth and environmental issues. So I'm super happy to be here and grateful as well. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chugi from the Philippines. I'm a social worker and a local youth development officer in my country, and I'm leading a community project called Project Spice. It is a social enterprise project for single parents to help them sustain their basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
So my name is Ansijal. So I am from Myanmar, formerly called Burma. So I'm actually working on the new internet governance forum that is under the UN IDF. So basically, working for the misinformation and also digital literacy and also other talking about digital issue that is happening in Myanmar and also around the world. So another side project is also working for the Global Citizenship Education Project that is promoting the concept and values of global citizen and also introducing that kind of concept to the Myanmar people. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. I am Liam Ikenasoria from the Philippines. I am a development worker at the Legal Resource NGO in the southern part of the Philippines in Mindanao. I co-founded an organization named Tabang Sikad that aims to empower youth in the grassroots level, to be an organizers that will aim to have a genuine representation in governance. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Mingta Bai. I'm from Burma, and I'm a first-year student studying the PPE, which stands for Philosophy, Politics, and Economics. I have volunteered at several organizations which promote social changes in our country such as youth empowerment, reduce inequalities, and environmental sustainability. Now I'm involved in two projects, and the first one is about eliminating discrimination against LGBTQ community, and the second one is promoting civic application in Myanmar. So thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Jit from Malaysia, and I was previously part of a team that successfully lowered the voting age in Malaysia from 21 to 18. And I'm also also previously part of several organizations that worked on media freedom, that worked on youth empowerment, LGBTQ advocacy, and currently I'm actually looking at how we can leverage the arts in advocacy in greater and more powerful ways, so thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Adi Cahyo Prasetyo. I'm from Indonesia. Currently, I'm working as a teacher for a student with disability in one of private school in Indonesia. Besides teaching, I also a founder of Social Inclusive Education Project, which our project also concern how we can provide children with disability who live in remote area so that they can have better access to education. It's great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joani Duhyun, and I'm come from Vietnam. My academic background is in international studies and psychology. I'm currently working as a research collaborator and a communication member at Share for Vietnam Development, and my research interest is focused on political rights of women and the masculinities and the mental health.
Good. Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good day. My name is Erdina, 21 years old, from Malaysia. I'm currently in my third year of law school, where in my law school, I'm also the Law Society President and also Disciplinary Commission Chairperson. Outside of law school, I have conducted projects for youth empowerment and education inequity, but the reason why I'm in YSLI today is because I wanted to branch out of doing community projects and also understand especially on structural reforms, which I'm sure all of you are part of. So yes, thanks for welcoming us.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ling from Vietnam. I'm currently working in a social enterprise in Vietnam to support women who are the survivors of domestic violence in Vietnam, and I'm also very honored to receive the funding from the U.S. Embassy for two times to do my own project to encourage high female university students in Vietnam to become leader in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ada Luapeling from Malaysia. So I'm just graduated from psychology in industrial organization. My civic interest is in mental health advocacy as well as the student autonomy, which are currently focusing on the higher education reform in Malaysia. Thanks for having me.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. I am Omed from Indonesia. I am a part of one of the non-government organizations, especially in education, Science Santre Indonesia or Yayasan Karya Riset Indonesia Foundation. It aims to make equality the education in the strength of Indonesia. This is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning. I'm from Bangkok, Thailand. I'm currently working as Associate Customer Management in a telemedicine company, but in two days ago, I just got a new job of financial in a united overseas banking known as UOB in Thailand. But I have a strongly passionate in human life, gender equality, and political. So previously, two years ago, I have experience work with the political party to fix and relight the sentence for LGBT marriage that they can marry, same as the state Cooper. But right now, I'm just a freelance political activist because the political party that I have worked with there was disallowed by the Thai court in Thailand. However, thank you for having me here, and I'm really grateful. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brogram. I'm from Thailand. Now I'm working as a doctor.
There you go. Just don't touch, just don't hold the microphone. Don't touch it.
Oh, don't touch it.
There you go.
There you go. Can I repeat this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Brogram. I'm from Thailand. Now I'm working as a doctor. My special interest is civic help. I run a project, the elderly clinic in my community. I collaborated with other medical personnel in my hospital. My purpose of the clinic is to lower in equal access to medical treatment and improve quality of life of the elder. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is An. I'm from Vietnam. I do journalism and also communication in the development field. My civic interest in media literacy and also using communication to improve the life of the marginalized communities, especially the most vulnerable children in Vietnam. It's my honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Song Po Sa. I'm from Cambodia. I currently work as in an organization that supporting women's in social enterprise, and my civic interest is in journalism and media freedom. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. It's very glad to be here, even though my tropical immunity cannot help for the cold weather in Nebraska. My name is Triskiang Garini Santi Cafe Briani. I'm from Indonesia, and right now I'm a project officer in a national NGO called Indonesia Planned Parenthood Association. I work in program inclusive to empower trans women community. Aside from that, I also active in co-founding Narasi Pompuan. It's a small youth community base in my city to address sexual harassment issue, especially for the university students, so I'm super glad to be here because I can get a lot of insight and get a lot of new things from the policy here regarding the inclusivity, also regarding the gender equality in general. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Vice President, Vice Legate, ladies and gentlemen, a very good morning. This is Jit from Cambodia. Jit currently work for a gender organization that I'm focused on, freedom of religious or belief. who um, that I'm focused on, um, freedom of religious or belief, um, peace education and statusless communities. Prior to that, I'm also a co-founders of the um, youth organi- um, youth organization called Pretty Gap Cambodia. It's a project that work on uh, pretty gender gaps and um, girl in STEM education in the com- community. That's why I focus on um, inclusi- inclusivity, um, um, I promote um, gender equalities in my local community. This is a very honor um, to me to um, sit here to, to know the procedural of the meetings and also the emotion, uh, motion and voting system he is. So this is very honor for me. Thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Hello, uh, oh, sorry. Hello, good morning, everyone. I hope you're all doing good. My name is Kyle Christian Saga. I'm currently a college student studying psychology. So I'm from the Philippines. And um, for the past five years, I have been advocating for mental health as well as good governance. Um, but particularly, um, one thing that I'm also working on is that I'm currently the chairperson of the Social Services Committee in my student government in my university. So we bring social aid programs to various communities in my city. Um, but apart from that also, I am currently working on a project called Sidlak Kabataan. So uh, this project actually aims to um, democratize mental health through good governance. So this is a project that we closely work on with our young civil servants in our city because in the Philippines um, we actually have a platform where we get to be able to involve our young people to participate in good governance through um, policy lobbying and legislations as well as um, um, implementing programs as well in our community. So I'm really looking forward to, you know, um, make this project foster even better. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. I am Feranito Alosuarez and I'm from Timor-Leste, or known as East Timor. A young country from Asia. Currently I'm working as a gender and inclusive pedagogy in Timor-Leste which is provide training to teachers to how to teach student with special needs. Aside from this, I also run a project of enhancing education which is funded by a YC academic fellowship. So that's all about me. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
I just wanted to say thank you again and I would also like to introduce five of our six uh, student ambassadors uh, who are here. Uh, would you please stand? We could not do this program without our student ambassadors and they have served us extremely well over the years. And this particular group of student ambassadors is certainly no exception to that. Um, I would also like to thank uh, one of our other staff people who is here today. Um, the UNO team is actually made up of uh, five people and myself. Uh, and I also wanted to thank the Gallup Organization which has supported this from the very beginning. Uh, while they are here, um, they visit Gallup. They will, they already have taken their Clifton Strengths thirty-four evaluation prior to coming here and uh, they receive an individual coaching session of approximately an hour and a half um, while they are here uh, from a Gallup certified strengths coach. So once again, thank you very, very much for having us here today.
Well, thank you all for being here. Commissioner Boyle.
I also want to thank all of you for coming too. I think what's interesting is when, when we have students like you come in, it, it always reminds me that we all have common goals here. And when I heard many of you speaking, a lot of the things resonated with me. I've got daughters that are about your age, so it really, it really makes a big difference. So things you all talked about that you have in common with us are things like political freedom, uh, it's about youth engagement and empowerment, mental health, um, freedom of the media, LGBTQ rights. You've got folks here talking about the importance of education in anyone who has a brain, disability rights. And really it's about making the world a better place. And so I appreciate everything that you do and it's, it's always interesting to me because looking at a looking at the group, you just think, oh, these are, these are just a bunch of college students. But when I, when I hear the the, the power behind everything that you're doing, it's incredibly inspiring. And so I just appreciate what you do and I'm grateful that you're the generation that's gonna make the world a better place. So don't make the mistakes that we've made at my age. Okay? All right. So thank you and I'm glad you're here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Um, welcome. And uh, we're delighted to uh, have you here to uh, join with us in our exercise of participatory democracy. Um, we're proud of the way uh, that the government uh, has developed in the United States. And uh, we look for guidance and improvements and new ideas from around the world. And so you bring fresh air to, to us and I hope that we are able to provide you with some ideas to take back to uh, your countries as well. Like Commissioner Boyle, I have children your age and uh, particularly I have daughters your age. And I'm really struck by the women who are here uh, today and uh, it looks like we're getting to a pretty much even balance between men and women, which is important around the world. Um, this is Women's History Month, I think, in the United States where we recognize the contribution of women uh, to our nation and internationally. And so uh, particularly to you women, kudos. And uh, we look forward to uh, seeing you leading your nations uh, in the twenty-first century. Again, welcome.
Well, again, thank you so much for being here. And it's interesting, as I said when I was speaking with you earlier, the um, interesting connection that we have on issues. So things that we're dealing with and our priority of mental health here, um, many of you spoke of. Um, again, as it is National Women's History Month, it's amazing to see our young women and the interest in the women issues that you all talked about. But you, again, um, another impressive group of individuals that have come to visit us and we appreciate you being here and wish you the best of luck. So thank you. With that, we will go on to the agenda. Um, next is our citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Louis Humennis, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. It's uh, good to see you Commissioners. I have more time to attend these meetings. I, I want to talk about civic engagement since that's one of the things that uh, the previous presenters were talking about. And, and I've been trying to think at a, a good time to talk about this. I wanted to talk about your rules of order in January, but I was uh, busy with other commitments, with a commitment. Um, so you, you guys function off of uh, off of your rules of order and also as a political subdivision of um, the state of Nebraska. And that can get a little foggy. I think uh, you, um, you have different philosophies on um, what, what the county board can do. I don't prescribe to Dylan's rules. I think that if you got a group of people that want to do something, you can do it. Um, but that's an aside. On your rules of order, under rules of debate, you have a new item, fairly new, which, which uh, states that co- your, uh, your Commissioners have the ability to speak twice, five minutes each time. And that's a new thing. And that was introduced following um, what some perceived as just craziness a- at the board after uh, debate on uh, the Juvenile Justice Center project. There was, I think somebody changed their minds on it. The board wanted to be cohesive on this issue. Um, there was six out of seven supporting bringing the Juvenile Justice Center over here in downtown. And then somebody changed their minds. So then there was five out of seven. And so the debates uh, on on um, creating a, a new location downtown. Um, there, there was some traction on that. For me, the, the wa- it wasn't much because it, you still had five Commissioner supporting bringing the Juvenile Justice Center uh, down here. But for some reason, that was intolerable. Uh, and so the debates went long and unfortunately you also have another group that meets later in the afternoon. So maybe that played into uh, the perception that the meetings were uh, not going orderly. They're not, they're, they weren't transpiring in a orderly fashion. But he- here's the, here's the thing. If you guys have a time crunch, why doesn't a Commissioner move to end debate? All bodies throughout the world are able to have a member move for the end of it, the debate. But now you have a rule here that says Commissioners can only speak twice on an item. And you know what? There, there's not much controversy going on on uh, the vast majority of items. But now you have a rule that says the, the, the li- um, the limit for debate for a Commissioner is to speak twice. So um, that, that's my, uh, what I, what I saw was that instead of falling back on standard procedure to uh, for, for one of the Commissioners to, to say we've, we've run of course over debate, can we move on? Uh, can we move to uh, uh, end the debate? The state legislature calls it cloture, a motion for cloture. Um, but that, I guess uh, I guess Rules, Roberts Rules of Order which are on your um, Rules of Order, you're not looking into it or something like that? I don't know what's going on. But for me, I think it was way to gag and bag your Commissioner who was uh, maybe not uh, um, in line or um, to tell Kavanaugh, no mas. This, w- we're, you know, we're running out of time for today. Uh, so I hope you look at uh, why you introduce
Time.
Your rules.
Thank you.
The, the reasoning behind the rules and how they affect your uh, your meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our presentation. We have an update on the contaminated spoil specials event, a project at the Douglas County landfill. And um, with us, we do have members of the um, waste management team that had been asked at our last meeting to come forward and um, there were some questions and um, data that people were interested in.
Morning Commissioners. Roil Palmer, Waste Management. Uh, I have with me today Mike Hay who's a area manager for directors or for disposal and Josh Berry who is our Waste Acceptance Manager. Um, we're handing out a little packet right now. It has a few diagram, few items in it, like the anatomy of a landfill. Kind of just talks about how we build them. And then part of that section is blown up to show you our liner section, which there was questions on last week. And then uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh alluded last week to a profile those are in there. And then at the end, there's a, a summary of analytical in there. So the, oh, do you want to go ahead?
Good morning.
Thank you for having us today. So we put this packet together.
Could you just state your name and?
Oh, my name is Michael Hay. I'm with Waste Management Incorporated. Uh, I reside at, or my office is twenty-six oh one Midwest Drive, Kansas City, Kansas. I'm responsible for several area landfills in the Midwest here, including uh, the one right here in Douglas County.
Thank you.
So we put it packet together because I'm a kind of hands-on type of person, like to, we're gonna be talking about a few things here. I, I, I did watch the meeting last week, so I'm aware of some of the questions that were already asked. So that's what this packet comes through to kind of clear some stuff up. We do have the full analytical here. We're gonna give this to Kent Home in the Department of Environmental Services. As you can see, this is front and backside. So for these two, the waste streams that are coming in now, it's, it, there's a lot of data. We didn't think you know, the sake of paper, given that. So Kent will have these if you want them. We also have them electronically if you'd like to see that too. They are summarized on that table though, because there was some questions on the analytical. And I'll take your questions uh, that anyone has going further on the, on this particular project or anything else about the landfill.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Boyle.
So, uh, thank, thank you very much for coming.
Now it should be.
There you go. I appreciate that. All right. So thank you very much for coming. Um, I think this all came about, as you said, you saw the meeting last week where um, a lot of this starts from the events that happened in East Palestine. And so um, that's really on our mind and knowing we had an oil spill at our border uh, with Kansas and, and why we're receiving the, the soiled the, the soiled soil, the oiled soil. I think we just wanted some clarity just for, for citizens and ourselves. Reassurance is that we're not, we're not getting contaminated uh, soil and that the water supply will remain safe. So uh, a, a couple of questions are, uh, so the, the soil testing that occurs, is it an outside organization that does, that does this? Is it Waste Management? How can you verify that it's a, it's not biased information, for example?
Yeah, for questions about the actual sampling, last week, Mr. Palmer talked about the team that approves this, that, that really looks at this analytical. So I brought Ross with me today to-
Great, thank you.
Uh, Josh.
Yeah. Um, my name is Joshua Berry. I am a waste approvals manager for Waste Management. I actually work out of, out of my home, um, but I am a corporate employee. Um, I live in Lakos Ark, Missouri. And your question was relating to the-
Just do, how is, how is the soil tested? And we only have a couple minutes, but in a nutshell, like how do we make sure that the contaminants are, that they're, what contaminants are in there? And then by what, what quality measures are in place to state, for example, there's certain parts per million that are acceptable from a, a health standpoint? Uh, and then how do we verify that once it's in the landfill, for example, it's not spilling out into the, for example, the water supply?
Okay. Um, so the, when the, when the event occurred, EPA was dispatched to the site. Um, the EPA has on scene coordinators. Kansas Department of Health Environment has an on scene coordinator. Um, they with um, uh, the re- meeting the requirements that we have for disposal of contaminated soils from petroleum products in, in the Pheasant Point landfill. We came up with a s- a certain data set that we had to have uh, to, to make certain that what we were receiving was gonna be acceptable for disposal in a subtitle D landfill. Um, the, the sampling that occurs um, is, is the, the company that samples the, each one of these um, results that you see is Burns and McDonald. They submit those analytical report or those samples to Pace Analytical Services in Kansas City. And they actually do the analytical. We, this is, you know, all third party that, that does this. We don't do any, any of this in-house at all.
Good. That's, that's good to know, just from a quality control aspect.
And as far as parts per million, okay? So um, the, the analytical that, that you have a s- a summary in front of you, um, ben- benzene is, is one of the constituents, obviously, one of the major constituents you look at when you're looking at petroleum contaminated products. Uh, the regulatory limit is uh, five hundred parts per billion. So um, that, you'll see the regulatory limit typically stated in parts per million, which is point five parts per million. Okay? Okay? Uh the highest result that we have seen in any of the samples that we have taken and and gosh, we've probably got thirty different soil samples that have been taken. Um and and then we have an oily waste profile, which is in addition to the the soil and the oily waste is booms and absorbent debris and other types of materials to try to soak up oil. The highest result we've seen has been seventy nine parts per billion and the regulatory limit is five hundred parts per billion. Um and to speak to the um ability to keep this from contaminating the groundwater are, you know, i- I think that's 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 what Doug uh what Mike would be speaking about. He uh uh you know, the landfill design
One minute.
is um such that it meets subtitle D standards and this is where um regulatory agencies want this material placed to try to keep the environment safe because we do have the controls in place to make sure that it is not going to contaminate the environment further.
So do you continue to test samples as they come up to Douglas County to make sure that none of them exceed those standards?
There's there's a requirement that soil is tested one sample for every two thousand cubic yards. Um for the um oily contaminated debris, it's one sample for every uh uh one hundred cubic yards. We have since added another uh profile that is uh sediment and wood chips they've from that they placed in the stream trying to recover any product out of there that requires one sample for every one thousand cubic yards.
And just for perspective, how many cubic yards are we expected at our landfill?
Okay, time. We'll come back to that one. Um Commissioner Fred?
Uh thank thank you, Madam Chair. Um Mike, thanks for coming in. I and uh thanks for watching. I don't know. Mike, thanks for coming in and thanks for watching last week. Um the I've taken a tour of the facility. Ryle was kind enough to take me around there. It took, I don't know, it it took a while. I don't remember how long. But uh it was very impressive. What I was gonna ask is um a little bit different a direction than Commissioner Boyle was going. The only certain facilities within Waste Management's, you know, nationwide structure are capable of dealing with what we're actually dealing with in Douglas County right now, correct? Um so um what I'm getting at is where else where else within the Waste Management um uh profile nationwide could this material actually be stored or or disposed of?
Yeah, that's a great that's a great question. So first off, this waste is not uncommon. This is what we commonly refer to as petroleum contaminated soil. So it's it's not much different than if a gas station had a tank for thirty years, they suspected it was leaking, they're gonna replace it, they test the soil the same way. And if it meets it those requirements, that petroleum contaminated soil from an excavation of an old gas tank or diesel tank that maybe was buried in the ground. So it's not uncommon to take uh petroleum contaminated soils. In this area, when we price this, so we have a customer comes to us, says, hey, we have this big oil spill, we all saw it in the news, what happened, we knew about it. They they estimate the amount of tonnage that they think they're gonna bring us or cubic yards. We present them with our options of what we have in the area. So what I had here uh and and I'm the one who made the decision where it was going to go. We have a site just north of Topeka, Kansas, and we have Pheasant Point landfill. This location is almost right between the two. I think if you're driving it, it's about ten minutes closer to go to Topeka. But that site's a little bit smaller with a smaller crew. Ryle's team is a lot larger with a lot more heavy equipment. They can handle a spike like this for, you know, a couple of weeks. That's really the reason. So there's several facilities that it could go to, those are the two closest.
So and this this is a little bit trite, so it's not like the state of Kansas or the governor said, no, not here. I mean, that, you know, um
Not at all.
It was a rhetorical que- I didn't I didn't think that happened, but you never know for sure. Of those X amount of landfills that could actually deal with with the EPA uh requirements, right, and the profiles that match? Um d- does the EPA require matching profiles all the way down the line? So in other words, if Waste Management, let's just say hypothetically, Waste Management had five um entities in the in the area within a five hundred mile radius that could deal with the issue? Um does the EPA require those profiles be, you know, to the to the letter? I mean, or is ours better than the one in Topeka or near Topeka? Uh bigger? But is it uh does EPA require different things from us than it requires from uh from the Kansas facility is what I'm getting at?
No.
Okay.
No, the regulation's the same.
Okay. That's what I suspected. What other final, the final thing, and I I think I know the answer to this. What other options were available? Was this was the best one. You had to do it within a region, right? When this when this occurred, because the spill occurred in a specific spot. You you didn't have that many choices as what I'm getting at.
Yes, the my choices were uh and and they're still to this day, uh just north of Topeka and Pheasant Point here. And uh we also considered Johnson County landfill in Kansas City. It was a very large facility there in Kansas City.
One minute.
Right. Finally, my my point is if there's a um, you know, a spot in Arizona that seems or or Utah that seems more remote, you didn't have that choice. I mean, you you couldn't say, oh, by the way, we're taking all this, you know, we're taking this spill waste from from Kansas. Can we, you know, can we work it into Utah? I mean, you you didn't have that capability based on your corporate or EPA requirements.
Well, it it it's just economics. The further the waste has to go, it makes it more expensive to do the cleanup. In this case, it was almost equal distance between the two. It really didn't matter between those two. And and we, you know, we have competitors out there that would have looked to serve this customer as well.
Okay. Okay, good information. Thanks.
Um Commissioner Morgan, you had your you no, no. Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Yep. And so just to continue down the things I would I had been asking before, when you talked about um seventy nine parts per million of benzene per per billion and then uh how many cubic in in X amount of cubic yards? Can you go over that, those statistics again? Uh like how many cubic yards are being sent here? How many tons are being sent here?
So I I think so far, it's about forty eight thousand cubic yards have come in from this job. I I think they're estimating maybe about the same amount to complete it. They're working hard to get it done.
I see. Okay. And then just for our background, um and this may be for Kent Home, do we know how much we're getting what what we're getting paid for taking the taking the oil or taking the soil?
Good morning Commissioners, Kent Home Environmental Services Director. Uh the the majority of it is is three dollars per ton.
Three dollars per ton. How many tons are we getting?
Uh I believe you said right now about forty eight thousand.
So now about a hundred thousand.
So so that's just simple, simple math right there. So and we get that same amount or more uh for the remaining.
Okay. And then is there any anything done uh to ensure, are there any bonds in place to ensure that if there uh is is a leak, for example, of the landfill, is there any way we can be sure that gets covered or treated or or is that even a concern? Do we test the soil surrounding the lands landfill to make sure that there aren't leaks?
I'm I'm gonna let them talk about the controls that are in place, the regulatory requirements in place around landfill for monitoring. Uh they can also respond to your question about bonding. Is that?
Yeah, like what what's done to make sure that, for example, that there isn't a isn't a leak? What ensures that there's no leak, number one? And number two, if there is, how is, who pays for that?
Right.
So included in your packet is um a a simple description of our liner system. Uh and I think Ryle blew it up to show the actual bottom, but we show you the whole anatomy of landfill all the way up to when we cap it off. So it starts off with a two-foot recompacted clay liner. That's really taking the soils that are available to us, testing them to figure out what the exact elasticity and and what you're trying to do is make a really low permeable layer. And this is just a backup to the actual plastic liner. I've asked Ryle to bring two samples. Um you guys can actually feel what that's made of. This is a high-density polyethylene plastic liner that's put on the bottom of the landfill. And the whole idea is to separate the waste from the surrounding soils. Uh in addition to the lining system is a leachate collection system where uh we collect any, what we call leachate in a landfill is rain, snow, any water, liquids that get into the waste while we're filling is gonna leach to the bottom of the landfill and therefore be collected. And that's really, that's a big part of the protection, because if you collect that leachate and pull it out, it's kind of like saying if you have a leaky bathtub, if you never use the bathtub, the bathtub doesn't leak. So we build the liner to the best of our ability to what the regulations require to do, and that's what we we sent around that plastic liner to show you how tough that stuff is. And then but and then on top of it, we don't allow the leachate to build up in the bottom of the landfill to begin with. Because leachate is what could possibly leak out if the liner were to fail. And then in addition to that, every landfill, every subtitle D landfill has to have a groundwater monitoring plan. So we know that under Pheasant Point landfill, the groundwater flows. It flows from the northwest to the southeast. So we have up gradient wells, which are put on the on the northwest side, and then down gradient wells are placed uh uh in a pattern on the southeast side. And then what we do is we sample the water, the up gradient, and and that's what the water is going underneath the landfill as, and then we sample it down gradient. So you're really looking at, is there any change between that as it moves under the landfill? And that tells you if your liner has good integrity or not. And if you find any kind of contamination in there, you have to test it, analyze for it and see, is it from the landfill? Sometimes components can be just naturally occurring. Uh so far, there hasn't been any issues with the groundwater sampling.
And and if there were, who would pay for that?
That would be Waste Management's responsibility. It's our site.
Okay, alright. Good. I I think you've answered my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here today. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, we'll move to our public hearings, excuse me, our public hearing for a Class C twelve five five zero license, on off sale for test drive. EBA Big Red Neighbor Grill and Sports Bar. Um this is a manager application for Jeremy Kirk Kirkland of one four one one zero Ogden Street. Um this is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak um on this public hearing? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh my name is Bill Harvey and I'm here on behalf of Big Red Neighborhood Grill. And I have with me Jeremy Kirkland, who's gonna be our manager out there. We're very excited about this project. We're gonna be able to bring a restaurant location to an underserved area out in northwest Omaha, no northwest Douglas County between Omaha and Bennington. And uh so we're 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 really very excited about this project.
Very good. Thanks for being here. Um at this time, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? This is the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Second. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Hi Jim, good to see you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Commissioners, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Next is a public hearing for a Class D one two five five one five license. Distilled spirits off sale for Ellsworth Crossing LLC. Twenty two six nine zero two West Center Road in Waterloo. Manager application Anthony Ellsworth. Is there um anyone here wishing to speak for or against this application? Good morning.
Thank you for taking time this morning. My name's Tony Ellsworth and I'm the owner of Ellsworth Crossing along with my wife Amber.
Great, thank you. Nice to meet you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. Gosh, I'm a tickle in my yeah.
Motion passes six to zero.
Alright.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Um next is our finance um committee. Well, we'll go to committee reports. First is the finance, the budget report as presented and the monthly fee report from the uh clerk as presented. Um next is our human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Um the legislative report is in your pocket. Um if you have any questions or concerns, um please let us know. Um with that, we do have need for an executive session, so I'm going to recess out of the Board of Commissioners and go back to our Board of Corrections. Is there a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
One moment, please. Uh could you, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, could you repeat that motion in second for me?
Uh it recessed out of the Board of Commissioners and go on to the Douglas County Board of Corrections. And the motion was um Commissioner Rogers and the second was Commissioner Mike Friend.
Okay, thanks a lot. Commissioners Morgan and Rogers. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, with that, we will go to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia's absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
I may approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next are citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda?
Louis C. Menace, twenty seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. Uh good morning.
Good morning.
I am uh again speaking in support of having a combined facility for mental health services provided by the county at at this location at Corrections. Um and I do so understanding that you guys went through uh a series of public engagements. And um you heard differently than what I support. I actually, originally, I support having a mental health at Corrections, supporting supporting the Corrections Director and all that he does for the inmates and the his um the people under his custody regarding mental health. Uh but after your public engagements, you had uh committee meetings on the subject and you decided to look into a a combined uh facility. Which as it was presented, you would have a fac- uh a mental health facility facility inside Corrections and then a nearby facility for bona fide clients of the county, which I think that's a good uh idea. Um but seeing the information that a lot of your clients overlap, where they're receiving um help for because they're like poor or indignant and then they're they're also uh criminally involved. I think a combined facility makes sense. But I also understand what the community's talking about, because I think what they're saying is important, that we shouldn't just be intervening when people are in crisis. saying is important, that we shouldn't just be intervening when people are in crisis. We should be helping those who need help, who are asking for help. With their mental capacities. So that, I see those two as separate projects that can be, that can be project managed by the county. Support the director and his facility and also law enforcement who understand who they're dealing with, but they don't have the capacity to deal, you know, treat them, that the law says you're there for criminal intervention. That's what they're, they're, they're to do, but they understand the people. That's important work. But also listen to the community and saying, we know how to prevent folks from getting there, from having to deal with law enforcement. And that is care, mental health care on an ongoing basis, not just when people are in crisis. So I hope that you guys find the funds to work on those two projects. I know you have your legislative agenda. Funds from taxes, I think, one of the idea that, Madam Chair, you might have supported was a point five percent increase in sales tax. I think that, that could work and that could be used for ongoing, ongoing operations of the facilities and also maybe contribute to a mental health facility that is not with Corrections. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the report from the Director of Corrections. Oh, no, no. It was on citizen. No. He was, but it's during citizen comments. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you our report for February of 2023. Following the eighth month of the fiscal year, we are $4,125,003 under budget. I will continue to remind you that we have some major renovation and safety projects that have gotten underway and we expect those costs to reduce that surplus in the coming months. Those projects will extend into the upcoming fiscal year and we will encumber allocated funds to reduce the impact on the FY '24 budget request. $980,837 was spent on overtime costs in February. That is up from the previous month. We are projecting significant overtime cost reductions by May of this year with numerous officers who will have completed their training and their field training. And I told you, coming into the last month, I've made some adjustments to the report and we can, that continues to be an evolution. There are some additional graphs and charts in enclosure number one, and one of the items I thought of interest is the amount of bond payments that our records department processes on a monthly basis. And in February, there were over $800,000 in bonds that were processed. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 15 individuals at Community Corrections and saved 132 bed days in the jail. Work release admitted 27 individuals and house arrests admitted 64. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 20 individuals and one individual achieved a GED. In reentry services and therapeutic communities, 59 individuals were admitted. Pretrial services. We are still working on full integration of our data systems to provide you more robust data, but what I can report is that 229 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 795 individuals over the course of the month were supervised on pretrial release. 481 participated in 24/7 sobriety and 154 individuals were monitored via GPS. Our law library utilization via our new tablet system continues to increase and we are actually going to be able to reduce the resources dedicated to our existing law library very soon. Enclosure number three, compliance. Regular documentation continues to be collected for all compliance processes. We are in the final year of our ACA audit cycle and reaccreditation audits for the jail and community corrections will occur in the fall, either in late October or early November. Enclosure number four, personnel. Eight officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in February. However, six of those left during their academy training. And there was one retirement and another officer was separated for not successfully completing probation. There were no voluntary resignations from veteran staff. Eight officers graduated from the academy on February 3rd. 16 officers began their academy on January 27th and they have in fact graduated last week on March 3rd. 31 officers began a six-week academy on February 27th and they will graduate in the legislative chambers here on April 7th. So I'll make sure we get that invite out to all of you. That'll be noon in this room. 31 officers is a little much for us to handle in terms of inviting family and friends in the, in our training rooms. So we will have that ceremony here and you are all welcome to attend. Two officers who had recently left employment in good standing returned and completed accelerated retraining and have returned to full duty. And we are anticipating a class of more than 30 officers, which will begin training on April 10th. And barring any unforeseen events, this class will put the Department of Corrections at 100% correctional officer staffing for the first time in many years. We have in fact increased our correctional officer staffing from 80.5% to 93.7% in two months. The benefit is about to come in terms of the overtime because many of those officers are still in their training. And we recognize numerous officers for meritorious service in February. Enclosure number five, population. There are 1,138 admissions and I have a typo there that should say a decrease of 192. There are 1,173 releases. Our high count was 1,105 and our low count was 1,040. We have had an average daily population of 1,074. That was a decrease of 10 from the previous month. There were 69 custodial bed sanctioned, or custodial sanctioned bed days. That was a decrease. The US Marshal population increased. They are at or slightly above our contracted number for them, which is good news. They, that is a revenue producing population for the county. The felony pretrial population decreased. The misdemeanor pretrial population increased slightly. Probation violations decreased. 16% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 64% of our population were minorities. That is a decrease of 1% from the previous month and a decrease of 3% over the previous two months. 16% of our population were female and 19% of our population were homeless or near homeless. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,017 intake screenings and there were 370 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 28 times for emergent medical care and seven of those were by 911. There were six hospital admissions, which resulted in 46 days of hospitalization. And again, Commissioners, while the cost of all those services are borne by our, our contractor, this does also contribute to overtime costs as those, basically every time one individual is in the hospital, that's like opening up a separate housing unit for one person 24 hours a day for the duration of their hospital stay because we have to provide supervision on a continuous basis. There were 38 offsite medical specialty appointments. Courtney Nelson, registered nurse, was hired as well past Director of Nursing and she began her duties in February. And COVID-19 clinics continue to be offered regularly to the incarcerated population. We have seen an increase in requests for vaccinations since we began advertising them on our inmate tablets. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 148 initial psychiatric assessments and there were 228 initial mental health assessments. Mental health infirmary placements or suicide precautions, there were 130, and there were 133 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were 14 referrals to the Board of Mental Health and three individuals were transferred to long-term psychiatric care at the Lincoln Regional Center. And again, 48% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness and that is, continues to be the highest we've seen. And Commissioners, I added another enclosure going forward and there'll be some consolidations of a couple of others, so you won't, don't worry, I won't be making my report longer. But enclosure number eight is our security operations and honor guard. Our crisis negotiation team, our CNT, there were four successful deployments that deescalated dangerous situations without requiring physical force. Our correctional emergency response and transport team, or CERT, there was one deployment for a cell extraction for, due to an immediate safety concern. Quarterly CERT training was completed focusing on riot response scenarios. There were 13 searches of housing units conducted. The majority of contraband recovered were modified items being used for tattooing. We recovered a significant amount of illegal drugs which were thrown onto the roof of the jail in February in an attempt to land them in our outdoor recreation areas. The investigation into who is responsible continues with the cooperation of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Our honor guard participated for services for a fallen Kansas City police officer as part of the metro, Omaha Metro Honor Guard, and they performed casket memorial service and grade scythe services for retired Officer Shontae Jenkins. Other noteworthy items. Work on our facility-wide safety project continues. When concluded, all housing units with a top tier will have safety netting installed and the installation of safer bunks has also began. We are currently working with the, the architectural team to see if we can include the original portion of the jail and the bunk project. There are some physical plant barriers, but it appears as if we may be able to overcome them. This project will continue throughout much of the balance of 2023. The jail-based intensive, IOP or intensive outpatient treatment program for those with co-occurring mental health and substance abuse disorders began to provide services in late February. There is currently one community mental health center staff providing this service, but the grant does provide for four as the program grows. Preparation for our role as the host agency for the 2023 American Jail Association National Conference and Jail Expo is ramping up. The conference will be held at the CHI Convention Center, May 20th through the 23rd, and I will make sure we take care of getting all of you registered so that you can attend. Many of our staff participated in the polar plunge at Lake Zarinski in February, a fundraising event for Special Olympics. And we hosted our first staff appreciation day of 2023 in February. A chilly feed on all three shifts and awards ceremony highlighted the event. As always, I remain grateful to our staff who confront many difficult challenges on a daily basis to keep our facility safe and who make Doug, the Douglas County community a better place. With that, I'm ready for your questions.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. Looks like we have some good news on the staffing front. So that our percentages of authorized and on hand appear to be closing to the point where the corrections officers, frontline people are now over 90% staffed, 93.7% staffed, which is as high as I can remember. Is that right?
We had a brief period of time very early in 2021 where we were up, up at this level, but then we sort of steadily lost ground over the course of the next couple of years from then.
I think that's really good. And with our average daily population at 1,074 with a decrease of 10 over last month, you know, staffing up and population down, those are, those are good trends. I have one question though regarding this. On page eight, where you talk about the overtime, there appears to be an overtime, and I don't know on, on the left side, these 30,000, 25,000, 20,000, are those hours?
Yes, those are hours.
Okay. So for the February 23rd portion of this graph, it appears to be going back to March of '22, the highest of all the months. Am I reading that right?
Well, you are, but I can tell you that that, so Commissioners, this, this graph, there's data that pulls from the payroll and the payroll has a two-week lag. So the actual highest month we had was a few months back. But I will, let me double check this graph.
That's fine because, you know, it would seem counterintuitive. It would seem if our staffing is up, that overtime should be down, particularly if the population is down margin, even marginally. But yeah, if you could, I, I would hope that we would see that correlation, don't you?
You, you will. The issue is, is those staff that we've gained recently as of, really haven't given us any relief on overtime yet because they went through their, they either are in their academy or during, in their, we had 16 officers who graduated who are finishing up field training this week. So they won't make an impact on overtime until next week. The 31 officers who are currently in training right now, they will, they will graduate on April 7th. They will do two weeks of field training, so it'll be kind of that third week of April where they make an impact on overtime. I anticipate when I come before you in May, that we will, I will, you will start to realize that those numbers are going down.
Thanks. The majority minority percentages remain kind of out of whack at 64.1% minority. You indicated there's a nominal decrease of a percent.
Right.
That's truly nominal, but essentially unchanged from what we've seen before. A steady majority minority population in our inmate population with the African Americans leading all components with 42.
One minute.
.47% of the overall population. The diagram that you had and you noted on mental illness indicates, I think the quote you said was the highest we've seen at 48% with some kind of mental illness diagnosis, whether that would be the most severe psychosis down to adjustment disorder, right?
Correct.
Okay. The, the top portion of that, the psychosis, the most severely mentally ill folks is about 13.35%, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Finally, just kind of a definitional thing. On page 17, where you're talking about skill sets, and I, I just asked for a definition on this because I thought it was.
Time.
An interesting, we'll come back.
Commissioner Boyle?
So thanks again, Mike. I just have some questions just for my education. One is, can you give an example of a therapeutic community housing unit and how it differs, differs from other housing units?
Absolutely. So our first therapeutic community housing unit was our, our housing unit that was designated specifically for incarcerated military veterans. Absolutely. So our first therapeutic community housing unit was our, our housing unit that was designated specifically for incarcerated military veterans. They differ, you can tell by just walking in that that's different. The, and when we started that program, we were essentially out of classroom space. All of our, our classrooms are booked all day and into the evenings with various educational treatment and, you know, cognitive behavioral programming that goes on. So we were faced with the decision of, okay, let's, let's, I guess maybe the housing unit, the day room in the housing unit will become the classroom. And that provided us, was done out of necessity, but it provided us some really unforeseen benefits. And that really changed the atmosphere throughout the day in those housing units or in that housing unit. And, you know, it, it has evolved over time to where we have some limited self-governance by the inmates who are present. Like they, they have short-term leadership roles, they orient new people coming in, they hold meetings, support group meetings for, you know, the, the benefit of them collectively. And there's activities throughout the day inside those housing units. We have seen a great deal of buy-in from inmates in those therapeutic communities regarding their willingness to embrace being a little more vulnerable than what you would typically be in jail and, and to, you know, confront their issues a little more forthrightly than, than what you might typically see. So we have replicated that a few times. We have a, a community for, for women, another one for kind of men's general reentry. We have a faith-based community. And then we also, what's, I have some interest in developing, hopefully later this year, is a, a program for youthful offenders where we take that eighteen to twenty-four-year-old age group and we target resources and programming for that group and, because there's a lot of connectivity to, opportunities for connectivity to even problem-solving courts with young adult court and a lot of resources in the community for that, that young adult or transitioning into adulthood at-risk age.
That's helpful. Thanks. Then totally unrelated, how is the pre-trial release program going? Do we have statistics at all on, on those who are, are released if, if there are issues with them with law enforcement encounters?
I will get an updated on our, basically what I can tell you is about, we could, we could start to report a little bit on violations and I'll, I'll have that, them get that for me. It has been very largely successful. There have been a couple of incidences, as there always will be. But we, I believe that this is, has a lot to do with how we've been able to manage the population and bring it down somewhat. Which is important because our, it's always important. It's, it's even more important now as we are in that renovation period. Right now I have two large housing units closed for renovations and so having that breathing room allows us to enhance those, to complete those projects, which will enhance the safety throughout the jail.
Alright, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you very much, Mike, and the work that all of your people, family does down there, Corrections. What time is that graduation on April seventh?
I believe it is at noon. It's, I think we moved, at noon.
Noon?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna plan to attend. I've attended those before and I think it's important to try to be here. That's a great group. Glad you have that. These kind of updates are really important and I mentioned it a month or so ago, or maybe the last time you were here, that I'd like to see as if there's enough Commissioner's support for it, that we do this every other month with Brad Alexander, who I know is on Zoom. I just think it'd be great to have the youth do something similar, but I yield the majority of this board to see if there's enough input to our chairperson. If we do that, I really think it's worthwhile and important information for us to have every month. The kind of updates and what kind of changes are taking place. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, the report, I, I've been here, I guess, I don't know, two and a half years. I'm starting to lose, I'm starting to lose track. And the report's always, the report's always very valuable. One of the things that I've seen over the last two and a half years, and it's certainly not to pick on my, my esteemed colleague, Commissioner Kavanaugh, but one of the things that I've noticed is the, that every time you come up in front of us, the minority and majority population comes up. I, I was gonna ask you a couple of questions about that. And I'm not trying to start a debate. I think he would know if I was, but it could turn into a debate. What, what kind of policy decisions does the Douglas County Department of Corrections have control over? The, or functional decisions that actually impact that percentage? I mean, is it a, is it a small percent? I mean, decisions you make that actually can influence that majority minority population?
Little to none.
Okay.
You know, the we are a servant of the courts.
Alright.
We, we detain people who the courts tell us to detain and we release people who they tell us to release.
Correct. Correct. Sorry, I interrupted you. Didn't mean to point at you.
No, that's alright.
Aggressive. The reason I bring that up is it'd be nice if we could parade parents, the school districts, teachers. It'd be nice if we could parade the police and, and Sheriff's Department up in front of us every month right after you get done and ask them that specific question right after that. I'd, I'd like to hear all the variety of answers that, that relate to that. Second point I was gonna make about that is, I would imagine, I, I don't know this for sure based on the census data, but I would imagine in Douglas County, we've got maybe fifty-two to fifty-three percent female compared to male and, in, in our, in our community. Sixteen percent of our population are female. I'm wondering, that's disproportionate. Here's my point. We, we can do this every month and we can ask these questions and that's fine. Commissioner Kavanaugh and anybody else has this right to ask those questions. It just occurred to me to ask this question. If we're gonna go down this road, maybe the sheriff should be in front of us every month. If we want answers to those questions, we're asking the wrong people. This has turned into a speech. You could have predicted that. What I'm getting at is, there's a reason we have sixteen percent of our population in your facility that are female. And I would imagine at a very high level, the reason is females aren't committing as many crimes as the, as the sixteen or eighteen to twenty-four-year-old people and the people at a certain age level and also people that are, that are homeless and in desperate need of community mental health. There's a reason for that. I, I love asking you the question. You never have the answer. I'd like to maybe, if we're gonna continue doing this, start bringing people up in front of us who are gonna give us the real answers. Mike, thank you. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, no other lights? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So just following up on a couple of things. And I happen to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Friend, we should probably have other people addressing this. The reason I ask you is, you're the only guy who brings us these statistics and so I appreciate you bringing the statistics. Because it's a compare-to-what situation and you make some valid points in terms of other disparities. I think we touched on this maybe last month when you came here. These percentages of the inmate population, they're different with the people at work release and the people released through various programs, right?
There tends to be some differences, yes.
And we don't see demographics on those programs, but we probably should because it begs the question, okay, if you've got a captured population, the inmate population, you know, get past how they end up on your doorstep, why isn't that population the same throughout all the programs? For instance, and I don't know, we could delve into this. You have a good breakout of some of the program offerings. Now, this is in a section called Reentry Assistance Program Monthly Report. Pages fifteen and on. And, you know, I'm kind of interested in a couple of things. You got on page seventeen, a, a heading that says Thinking Skills. And, and, you know, we don't have to go into this, but that's kind of an interesting subset. I, I would be interested in following up with you off the record on what thinking skills are we teaching people? However, more pertinent is on page nineteen, Substance Abuse. So in January, for instance, there appear to be about thirty inmates enrolled in some kind of substance abuse program. Nineteen of which didn't complete it. So the overwhelming majority don't complete it. In February, there appear to be maybe fifteen more or less, eight of which didn't complete it. But substance abuse for our population of over a thousand is a huge contributor. I mean, just count the DUIs that you have in the population. The possession of controlled substance that you have in the population. You're way, way, way over these numbers. So substance abuse-related offenses would beg the question of, alright, you're in jail because of a substance abuse-related offense. Do you have a substance abuse problem, do you think? Maybe? Might be a question that could be asked. And that would probably represent a much larger population there. And then in this program, what's the demographic breakout of that? Does it mirror the overall population? Now, it, it's an ongoing discussion and I agree with Commissioner Friend that, you know, we should probably have law enforcement people here. They're the people who bring the population to your door and say, why is this population disproportionate regularly throughout the history that I've been able to review here? But on the substance abuse thing, tell me about that program.
Sure. So in, in community corrections, we've had an intensive outpatient treatment program. And it, and so the, 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 the actual outcomes may be better than the data would suggest in those graphs because that's a program that continues after people are released. So they may complete it post-release. It's designed to actually transcend their incarceration.
Can I just ask you real quick, is it like an AA program or what?
No, it's more structured than that. They do, this is a program that's operated by community mental health center staff in the Community Corrections Building. It is nine hours of group therapy per week plus one hour of individual and family therapy per week. That extends for, I believe, nine weeks. And then there is six months of case management in the community that follows that. So we oftentimes have people who begin that treatment process while they're in custody and continue it post-release.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, I see no other lights and in that line of conversation that we're having here, it may be worth looking at highlighting each of our programs during our Board of Corrections. Not that we don't like hearing from you, Mike, but, you know, again, because I think that that would give a, a, a better understanding of what we're giving as programs and services to those that are incarcerated and then thereafter.
Absolutely. We can, I could start working on that for next month.
Okay, thanks. Alright, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Can I get a motion to adjourn out of the Board of Corrections and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We are back in the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and we do have need for an executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for litigation purposes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero. Friend, motion passes six to zero. We're adjourned at ten fifty-four AM.